Here. So again, thank you everyone for joining us today. We're really excited to, you know, start to do maybe some, some regular webcasts like this. Just some housekeeping. There should be a chat function on your screen somewhere there. And you're more than welcome to use that to, to pose any questions that you might have as, as, as we go along here. We might not get to everyone but, or every question, but we'll certainly mark them down and get back to you and make sure every question is answered. The, the other thing just to keep in mind, we are recording this and we're going to, we have a new area on our website specialized for podcasts and videos, which some of you might know about, but we're going to send a communication out on that too. So this broadcast will be there recorded so you can refer back to it. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Mr. Greg Vallier. Greg is, is a chief, the chief US policy strategist at AGF Investments. And he joined AGF in February of 2019. In his role, he's responsible for providing insight into how US politics are shaping global markets. And his very unique perspective is derived from nearly 40 years of experience analyzing policy and politics as well as his deep personal relationships inside the Beltway. Greg provides insights on how today's US and global political activity and economic policies impact trade, currencies, interest rates, GDP, capital markets, industries, and the overall business climate. He's quoted, Greg is quoted in the US media quite regularly and he specializes in coverage of the Federal Reserve tax and spending issues and politics. And he's a frequent guest on CNBC, Bloomberg TV and Radio, CNN, Fox, Business News, CBS Radio. And as you can see, it just goes on and on. So we've got someone of a vast experience and knowledge located in Washington. And we just thought it would be really nice to hear the topics. And with the Three Amigos meeting today, as many of you might know, this was very timely. And I'm going to hand it over to Greg now, and he's going to give us some insightful comments. Greg?
Well, thank you so much, Paul. You can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Wonderful. Well, it's great to be with you. And as they say, timing is everything. And there's a lot going on right now. So there's, there's quite a bit to cover. Let me just start with my main point. And I will get into other things like the Three Amigos and geopolitics, all that stuff. But let me just give you my main point at the outset. I think that the US economy, if anything, is getting too much medicine. You know, when a patient is ailing, it's normal to give them medicine. But sometimes if you give a patient too much, there are side effects. And I think the side effect quite clearly is inflation, which I'll talk about in a couple of minutes. As far as the US economy goes, when you look at what's happened in the last year, it's really quite remarkable. About 12 months ago, we got 900 billion in COVID relief. In May, we got 1.9 trillion in COVID relief. About two weeks ago, we got 1.2 trillion in infrastructure. And they're still debating one more bill, probably about 2 trillion, that would be social spending, cradle to grave, you name it. Lots of social programs would come. I think when you look at that much medicine, you do have to worry that it, for some people, it could be a disincentive for them to work. I always cite my sister who owns a restaurant in New England, and she can't find workers, can't find cooks, busboys, waiters, waitresses. And when she talks to them, they tell her, look, we like your restaurant. But in this past year, there's been a dramatic increase in food stamps to people. There's been a dramatic increase in the child tax credit. There's still very generous housing benefits. Recipients of Social Security are going to get a 5.9% increase. And the list goes on and on and on of programs that we've seen this year. Great medicine, but again, I think it may have been too much. It may have led to this fear over inflation. And I would make a similar point with the Federal Reserve. I think Jerome Powell's a good guy. We'll see if he gets re-nominated. But I think he was too sanguine on inflation earlier this year. During the spring and summer, he didn't seem to think it was a big problem. And he overused the word transient. And I think that the inflation is not transient. I think it could last for quite some time. You've got to say that Jerome Powell and the Fed are way, way, way behind the curve. They need to catch up. So what do these two stories mean for policy? I think on fiscal policy, it's going to be tough getting that last bill, that $2 trillion bill. There's just one senator, Joe Manchin of West Virginia, who could defeat the entire bill because the Senate is tied 50/50. So one vote has an enormous amount of clout. I think Manchin is going to take his time. He wants to see if inflation starts to subside. There may be one more bill. I'm not sure it's going to be 2 trillion. They have to come up with a report tomorrow showing whether the numbers add up. And I have a hunch the numbers don't add up. So this could take a while. I think there's a growing anxiety over the US budget deficit, which has exploded in the last two or three years. Probably by the middle of this decade, US debt will exceed $30 trillion. That's a lot of money, a lot of debt to be serviced. So that policy could begin to change with a less of a final bill. And then on monetary policy, I think the Federal Reserve is so far behind the curve, they may have to speed up their tapering of asset purchases. As you know, right now, they're purchasing 800, I think it's 800 billion in treasuries, 400 billion in mortgage-backed securities. It's 80 and 40. And I do think that the Fed may decide to go faster and do all of this tapering. If they do, that means the door would be wide open for a rate hike by summer. I think we get at least two rate hikes in 2022. One maybe in July, another perhaps in September, maybe one more in December. So policies are going to have to change because inflation is not going away. A point I would make on inflation, I made it this morning in my morning piece, it's not entirely a story about oil and lumber and copper and grain. It's a story, I think, more than anything else about labor. Because these commodities can go up and down. But for labor, once they go up, they're not going down. And I noted this morning, the deal that was cut by John Deere, the big agricultural firm, for their 10,000 employees, the deal was ratified yesterday. That deal has a $10 an hour salary increase. It has increases every other year of 3% to 5%. It had a signup bonus for employees coming back from strike of $8,500. They had very generous healthcare benefits. And the reason you're seeing a package this, this generous is because of an acute labor shortage in the US. Labor is so tight, organized labor, workers can make big demands and have those demands filled. So in a company like Deere, or my sister's restaurant in New England, winds up paying employees more, but my sister's been offering signup bonuses as well, when they do that, they have to pass along the cost to their customers. And I think this passing along of costs is why inflation is not going away anytime soon. Oil has been down for the last few days. Oil could be down more. But the salaries and these bonuses will not be down. They will stay. So I think that while the US economy is poised to grow quite nicely, I think fourth quarter could be 5%. First half could be maybe 3.5%, 4%. By the time we get to the second half of the year, I think you've got to start worrying about the Fed and rates starting to head higher. Because inflation is not going to vanish anytime in 2022. Now, you might ask the question, why are they moving so fast? COVID, I think, is, is, is still a problem, but I think we've turned a corner. But at the same time, we're still spending money. The Fed is still buying treasuries. Why is this? I think a major reason is that Joe Biden realizes that he's in real trouble for next year's congressional elections. He knows the window is going to close soon. Therefore, he's going to spend as much as he can. Because I think the odds are quite high that you'll have in the fall of 2022, a Republican takeover of the House of Representatives. In fact, I'd go as far as to say, the issue is not whether they'll take the House, the issue is by how many seats. They only need three or four. I think the Republicans could take the House by 20, 25, maybe even 30. It won't be that close. The Senate is a tougher call, but the Republicans have a chance to take that as well. So Joe Biden has to know that the last two years of his term, and I say term because I think he's only a one-term president, I would be shocked if he ran. Do you realize if he ran for a second term and won, he would leave office at the age of 86? I just, I don't see that happening. So he knows his time is limited as president, so he wants to get as much done as he can. The problem is, if the Republicans take the House, that they'll, they'll thwart his agenda, and he will thwart their agenda. He has a veto power that I think would still be good. Certainly, it would be good in the Senate. So you could be looking at in these last two years of his first term, his only term, you could be looking at gridlock. And frankly, I think for the financial markets, gridlock is not that bad a story. If they don't spend a lot more money, if they don't regulate a lot more. So we could talk maybe during Q and A about Donald Trump. He's still around. He still could be a big factor. But I think the big story right now in, in Washington politically, is a growing sense that Biden is a one-term president. And frankly, a growing sense that he's looking frail. And hopefully, he'll serve out his first term. But he does look frail. I've known him for 40, 45 years. And it's quite obvious that he's lost a couple of miles off of his fastball. And that may, that may continue. A lot else going on, and I love taking questions, but I should spend a minute or two about a very important meeting here in Washington. At this, they meet at 4:45 this afternoon. The Three Amigos, the leaders of Canada, Mexico, and of course, Joe Biden. And while, while the relations with Donald Trump were not great between Justin Trudeau and, and Trump, I do think that while the relations are a lot better now, there are some real serious issues that have to be debated. One is this pipeline going from Canada through Michigan. The environmentalists in Michigan and elsewhere want the pipeline closed. I think Biden can't do that. We're in the middle of an energy crisis with soaring gasoline prices. He would get excoriated by the Republicans if he did that. So I don't see anything there. Where I see a real dispute is Biden's Buy America plan, which Trudeau and I think a lot of Canadians are leery of because it means the US will use subsidies to make, say, the electric vehicles, the EV. EV is going to be a big story. And it looks to me as if this subsidy of like $12,000 for every American buying an electric vehicle will shut out the Canadians and, and those manufacturers. So this is an issue they're going to have to argue about this afternoon and this evening. With the Mexican president, Biden has to talk about immigration. Although I would point out, in the last three or four months, illegal immigration has dropped. It still is a big issue. It's an albatross for Biden in the next election. That, that will certainly be discussed. And the, the Mexican president, who is quite the populist, I think will not agree to any kind of new energy deal with the US. I think that's unlikely. Biden's in a very awkward spot on energy. Because he's been so subservient to the environmentalists. And now we have a, a global crisis, as we saw in Glasgow. I mean, all these countries went to Glasgow saying, let's reduce global emissions. But what do they all want? They want more fossil fuels. In case it's a cold winter. So they want more coal and gas and, and oil. So I, I think that it's a good thing that all three of these leaders will get together. Biden has never personally met the Mexican president. And they've talked on the phone a lot. Biden has met Trudeau. And again, I think the, the relationship will be good. But I don't expect any big breakthrough on these issues. And I think Canada has a reason to be suspicious of the US subsidies. If these subsidies aren't addressed, there could be a trade dispute before the World Trade Organization. I wouldn't, I wouldn't totally root that out. A couple of other things I, I would raise, and then I'd love to take questions. Let me just spend a minute on two big issues. One is regulatory policy. Not the sexiest issue, but I have to tell you, the Biden appointments to the regulatory agencies have been extraordinarily radical. They're all progressives. They want to go after the drug stocks. They want to go after, certainly want to go after financial services. They want to go after fossil fuels. They're very aggressive on anti-trust. And I think that these regulators, including this woman who's been nominated to head the comptroller of the currency, to regulate the banks, she, she went, I'm not making this up. She got her college degree from Moscow State University. And I swear to God, I'm not making it up. And she's, there's a big editorial in the Wall Street Journal yesterday, saying how she wants companies to go bankrupt so the government can take over companies and, and eliminate the private sector. The good news is, I don't think she has the votes to get confirmed in the Senate. The bad news is, who the heck thought of this idea in the first place? And it's, it shows the mindset on regulatory policy. And then just finally, a minute or two, if I might, on geopolitics. It's always a big issue for investors. I'd say there are three stories worth paying attention to. I mean, the first is US relations with China. Xi and Biden had a good chat a couple nights ago, a very long chat, almost four hours. I think it was a good chat from a personal rapport standpoint, but I'm not sure there's all that in terms of substance that was accomplished. I must tell you that in Washington, the antipathy toward China is quite overwhelming in both parties. It's a bipartisan sense that China has not played fair with trade. They've not played fair with their, their dissidents, whether it's in Hong Kong or in Western China. There's anger over China hacking into US firms. But most importantly, I think is the feeling that China has not been transparent on the virus. They have not really let the World Health Organization or anybody know what happened in Wuhan. And I'd add, they're also building sophisticated new weapons. So I don't see a big breakthrough. They want to get through the Olympics in about three months outside of Beijing. You know, maybe things could get rocky or after that. But the fact that they talked is, you know, that's, that's not bad. Then we move to, to issue number two, the charming, lovable Vladimir Putin, who can always be counted on to try to stick a, a, a pocus in the eye. Putin, I think, is trying to blackmail much of Western Europe on his natural gas, and threatening to withhold shipments if Western European countries don't lighten up on sanctions. There's another, there's an immigration issue also with Belarus. It gets very complicated. But I, I think that Putin will be an irritant on energy. Putin, I think, will be an irritant in the Persian Gulf. And I think Putin has really angered the American intelligence community because of this Havana syndrome. If you haven't heard about it, it's radio waves that go into embassies, mostly in socialist countries. And our US embassy officials have this, just excruciating headaches. No one can figure it out. But I think Putin probably knows who's behind it. So that's the second. The third, that we always have to worry about, of course, is the Middle East. I do worry about the Iranians. The new Iranian president is even more radical than the last one. He is no fan of the West or the US. There may be a resumption of talks on nuclear policy. But I think we're a long way away from getting anything done there. And I think the Iranians will continue to be provocative in the Persian Gulf, maybe lobbing missiles at Israeli ships, maybe lobbing missiles at oil tankers. So those are the three big geopolitical concerns that I would have. But I, I would just conclude, Paul, by saying, I do think we've got a, a really good two or three quarters ahead. You look at the retail sales report two days ago, it was unbelievable. It's one of the strongest retail sales reports in, in memory. People have been bottled up. They want to go out and spend. They want to go, they want to go to restaurants. They want to travel. I think that this, this pent-up demand will give us another good two or three quarters with all the stimulus, monetary and fiscal. But as we get to the second half, I might become a little bit more concerned. So I will stop there. I'd love to take questions.
Yeah, no, that's perfect. And thank you, Greg. That's very insightful. And, and I like that you covered sort of the whole gamut there. That's, it's a lot to, lot to take in and a lot to digest. On that last note, and about the economy, I mean, I think our guests on the line would be, as much as we're all long-term investors, always interested in sort of what might be upon us in the markets in the, in the coming months going into 2022. And actually, this, this comes in on a question that we have, had come in with one of our guests, is, do you think, you know, in light of the fact you feel that we're still, there's a lot of steam in the economy and pent-up demand, are there things in Biden's administration stance on regulation and taxation that could sort of grind that to a halt? Is sort of, just a little more on the administration's stance on regulation and taxation?
Yeah, it certainly could. And so let, let me give two examples. First of all, these are two things I didn't mention, should have. First of all, I would say that if we get this final bill, there will be tax increases on, on very wealthy corporations and very wealthy individuals. A lot of the tax increases have been eliminated from the bill, individual hikes, hikes on capital gains. But in order to make the numbers add up, which will be quite a feat, they're going to have to look at some taxes. And I think that could be a negative, a modest negative for, for economic growth. The, the other issue that I didn't mention, and I should have, of course, is the shortages that we have in the supply chain. Whether it's the ports in Los Angeles, or Long Beach, or, you know, all the way up to the Pacific Northwest, or in Savannah, Georgia, there's a real problem, especially, of course, with computer chips, with semiconductor chips. My sense is semiconductor chips will begin to look a little more normal by summer. And the trade, the trade problem could persist also for another few months. I think Biden was slow to react to this. The Teamsters Union in Southern California has been a negative in this whole story. So there are things that you have to be a little concerned about. I'd say the biggest concern I have, and I'm, I'm pretty bullish now, but the biggest concern I have is that we may not be totally out of the woods on COVID. We see, we see spikes in Austria, Germany, Czech Republic. We see spikes in the US where vaccinations are still incredibly partisan and bitter. So there's, there's still a threat as the weather gets cold of another spike. It's not, it's not out of the question.
Okay. Well, no, that's, that's helpful. I mean, I know as, as Canadians, the whole, the regulations are, and taxation, which are tied together, are always a concern because of the, which leads into the protectionism, right? I mean, and it's, and with the, I know we, I guess we sometimes feel that Canadians do appreciate the importance of the US to us, but we wonder if the US appreciates the port, you know, our importance to them from that standpoint. So, you know, that's, that's something that's always a concern. I guess not to sort of overly put you on the spot, but, and, and I mean, the world has had so much to deal with, with COVID, you know, since, since, you know, going into 2020. But do you see any sort of other, almost like white swan events that, that could shock the markets in this environment that we're in going into 2022? And I, I, sorry to put you on the spot on that, but I just, I, I just, it just came up to me now, you know, because that's really those white swan events are sort of the ones that we want to condition ourselves for if we can.
Yeah, I, there's nothing that comes immediately to mind. I'm, I'm puzzled, like so many other people, to see the Treasury 10-year bond yield at like 6, 6, at 1.6, maybe a little below 1.6 today. So you've got bond yields extraordinarily low. And I do worry we could see a spike in that really quite quickly. I do worry about Joe Biden's health. I do think he's frail. Frankly, I don't think Kamala Harris is ready. I think she lacks the gravitas. I'm sorry, some, you, you may have fans of hers, but I, but she's been a disappointment to people in, in Washington. I do worry after the Olympics are over that China could become more aggressive in the South Pacific Sea. That would be, that would be a concern. I guess the, there's, there's not a lot to keep me awake, but if there's one, it would be the, the threat from ISIS, not, not the Taliban, but ISIS moving into Western Pakistan. That, that would concern me. I think the Taliban has its hands full in Afghanistan. But Pakistan, people don't realize this. Pakistan has something like 100 nuclear bombs. So when I hear about ISIS maybe having their eyes on, on Western Pakistan, which it's an unstable country to begin with. So I do worry that that could be the next hotspot.
Okay, okay. Just, and just to change the tune a tad, and go back to something you mentioned at the beginning of your talk, was the fact, and I, I found that very interesting, your comments on how the Fed has been a little slow out of the gate, and, and on all their, their policies. And I mean, as, what do you think is behind that? Because at the end of the day, I mean, we all agree, I think at some point, rates have to go up. We can't deny the, the need, right? So, yeah, what do you, what do you think's the reason for them being so slow off the gate on that?
Well, they, they look at recent history. And recent history has shown that their fears of inflation have never come true. Inflation has stayed remarkably dormant until the last seven or eight months. And I think they felt it would, it would stay, it would be transitory, and we, we get through it. I personally think they didn't factor in labor. I think labor is the big part of the story and the most persistent part. And they didn't factor that in. I mean, both Powell and, let me spend one minute on, on the, the appointment of the new Fed chairman. Powell, Powell, I think is the favorite, although the mere fact that Biden has not announced anyone yet, it's imminent, next two or three days. It makes me think that maybe Biden doesn't have total confidence in Jerome Powell. There's another candidate, Lael Brainard is her name. She's a governor here in Washington at the Fed. She's just as dovish though, as Powell. And I don't see any big change in monetary policy. The monetary policy that I think was frankly bungled earlier this year. There is a difference on regulation of banks. Brainard is more liberal and an ally of Elizabeth Warren, the very liberal progressive from Massachusetts. So Warren and other progressives are pushing hard for Lael Brainard. I still think it's going to be Jerome Powell. But to let him twist in the wind for day after day after day, it seems to me to be puzzling.
Okay. The other thing I just wanted to ask you about was, again, you mentioned the, these debt levels. I mean, obviously, COVID has added so much sovereign debt around the world. And even I, I mentioned to some of our clients sometimes and remind them that even, that even the province of Ontario has, I've heard, some of the largest sub-sovereign debt of any entity in the world. So these things, do you see these, these debt levels coming to fruition in a really nasty way at any point? I mean, is, I mean, maybe there's collect, this collective wisdom and to want to keep obviously rates long, for as long as, or sorry, low for as long as possible. And here we are sitting at, you know, 5,000-year low rates. How does the, these debt ceilings and the debt, how does this play out? How?
Well, it's been, not surprisingly, it's been a very dysfunctional partisan issue here in Washington. And we're going to see things heat up in the next month. The last month of the year in Washington is always crazy. And people wind up not getting out of town until December 23rd. So the big fight coming up is over the debt ceiling. The Treasury Secretary has made it quite clear that Janet Yellen has made it quite clear that we can only get by for another few weeks without raising the debt ceiling. And the Republicans are saying, no, we don't want our fingerprints on this. You Democrats have spent this kind of money, you do it. The Democrats say, well, you guys under Ronald Reagan cut taxes dramatically, you got to do this too. So it's a typical fight in Washington. I think that if we get close to a crisis on the debt ceiling, we are not going to default. And so you can, you can, you can remind me of this the next time we talk. But I will, I will predict that we do not go into default. If, if that's imminent, I think that Chuck Schumer and the Senate will swallow hard and do it themselves. Or the Federal Reserve will come up with emergency measures to guarantee US bonds, things like that. But they've got to get that done. They've got to also keep, fund the government. And that, I think, they'll just kick the can down the road. And that may not happen until later in, in the winter. So there's, there's a lot going on in the next four weeks. But a, a debt ceiling default to me is unthinkable. It's very, very unlikely. It's very, very unlikely. Again, if we get right to that crisis point, I think other forces will intervene.
Right, right.
But let me just, let me just say, Paul, longer term, I mean, we've got a real problem with debt. I mean, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to be over $30 trillion in debt later in this decade. And we have a country that's, that's aging. You know, demographically, you know, you, you've got more demands on Social Security. Nobody is, dares to talk about reforming Social Security. I make a very nice living. I'm over 65, but I'm going to get a 5.9% increase because that was tied to inflation. I don't, frankly, I don't need a 5.9% increase. And what I would like to see is reform of Social Security. But the politicians are terrified to take on that. They feel it would blow up in their faces. So without any reform of Social Security, I do think longer term, our debt is going to become a huge issue. And whether we have the ability to finance that debt later in the decade is, remains to be seen.
Yeah, well, what about all the infrastructure too, right? I mean, you know, that just adds to the pile, right?
The, you're absolutely correct. So the infrastructure bill, 1.2 trillion, was not, was not paid for. This, the second bill, everyone is saying we got to pay for it. We'll see about that. But yes, so we spent 1.2 trillion. We spent all this money on Covid, which was necessary. But we're now staring at just a staggering amount of debt. So how do we get out of it? Raise taxes? I don't see that. Dramatically cut spending? I don't see that. Take a meat axe to defense? No, there's too many bad people in the world. The only thing that could help a little would be strong economic growth. And we have seen, over the last few quarters, the revenue numbers to Treasury have been quite good. And the revenues to states like California have been extraordinary. And people benefiting, of course, from a very strong stock market. So if revenues pick up, that helps. That may, may level off the deficit for a while.
Right.
But the idea of actually reducing the deficit is, is pretty far-fetched right now.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and I know, I, I mean, I, on an annual basis, like a disciple, watch the Berkshire Hathaway meeting, the annual meeting every year. And, you know, I recall, Greg, on that note, that in the March, or sorry, it's every May, in May of 2020, you know, he was sitting on so much cash and he said, you know, which is being obviously conservative. But he said, at the end of the day, his only message he could come up with was, don't bet against America. And, and I think what he's getting, as you, like you said, America does have the ability to be very productive and grow itself out of certain holes. And I think that's what his message was at that time, too.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I, I would say that, I also usually say, don't bet against the Fed. And, you know, even if we get, worst-case scenario, even if we get three rate hikes of 25 basis points each in the second half of the year, the Fed funds rate is still at 0.75. That's still a remarkably low Fed funds rate. And I don't think the Fed's going to overdo it. I think the Fed will still be pretty accommodative. You know, maybe housing goes from a 20% annual increase to a 6% or 7% annual increase. But, you know, that's, that's normal. That's to be expected. So I'm, I'm a big fan of the Fed. I was disappointed that they were too sanguine on inflation, but I think they get it now. I think they know what they have to do.
That's great. Well, listen, Greg, I think I'm going to close it off on that. We've obviously shown that we could probably go on for quite a while. This is fascinating. I, I mean, even just on the macro, let's set aside the political agendas, the macroeconomic side. Your knowledge is so vast that it's, it's just fascinating to get your, your input on, on all this. So we greatly appreciate you joining us today. And I know all our guests, I'm sure, really enjoyed this. And, and just to remind everyone, this has been recorded. And we'll, we'll get a note out and have it on the website so people can, can take a look.
I would just say, Paul, I enjoyed this a lot. I had a good time. I wish you all good health and happy holidays. And in particular, I wish at some point next year, we're all together face to face with perhaps, with perhaps an adult beverage in our hands.
Absolutely. You're here, you're here to that. All right, Greg, we'll close it off, and thanks very much for your time.
All right, enjoyed it. Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.